Great, I would take approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Sean made the motion, seconded by Bruce. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we have the consent agenda, does anybody have any questions on that? Otherwise I'd take a motion to approve that.
I'll move, I'll second.
Okay, Rick made the motion, Maggie seconded it, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, Highway thirteen, Main Street reconstruction project update.
Just as a general update on the Highway nineteen project, concrete repairs.
Come on, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Just as a general project update for the Main Street project, concrete repairs were complete last week. Looks like they did the striping and some other manhole adjustments that need to be done as well, so. Matt would be in agreement, it sounds like pretty much everything's done as far as construction goes. Some yards that were touched up on the east side of the project still need some grass to grow. And hopefully that starts happening here as weather cools down and gets a little wetter. But otherwise I think everything else is pretty much complete, so. With the exception of trying to get a claim from the contractor to MINDOT resolved, which is mostly in MINDOT's hands, everything else is pretty much ready to go, so. Hopefully we can close that project out pretty soon.
I did have a New Prague resident ask me yesterday about some of the popouts on Main Street. And I don't, they didn't say specifically where they saw them, but they said they saw a lot. And that there was a cracked piece of concrete around a manhole. Have you seen anything like that? I mean, this should be like after the repairs were done?
Okay, so I mean, as you may know, back in June I believe it was, the contractor repaired many sidewalk areas that had popouts.
Right.
As far as I know, everything was addressed.
Okay.
So if there are areas that haven't been addressed, I guess I'm not aware of them.
Yeah, I would have to take a look too, because I know we've walked the project so many times this summer for warranty work and I, everything I saw was repaired.
Okay.
So that would be news to me.
Yeah, I was surprised to hear it too, so I just wanted to bring it up just in case.
No location or anything, just somewhere on Main Street.
They didn't, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'll check it out again just to make sure they're all done before we close out the project.
Okay, appreciate that.
I think I see him right outside of Flipside, Mayor.
Yep, sounds good.
Regarding the two thousand and twenty-two project, which just reached substantial completion. Inferney today should have the declaration to order, declaration ordering the cost and ordering the assessment hearing. So with that project now complete, the next step is to do the assessment hearing and to assess the benefiting properties. So similar to projects in the past, we've done this in the fall, I think the Main Street project that was also done this time last year. And those assessments are all shown in that memorandum that you should have in your packet today. And along with that, there is a resolution that needs to be passed.
Okay.
The assessments, you see in there, assessment rates were determined. First review in the feasibility report completed last year. And then they were updated this spring after project bidding with a few adjustments to them. So what you see in there are the rates that were established back in, I believe, April or May of this year with Chris Cabot doing that review.
These are really small to read, but what is the general, general number for residential?
Well, the total assessment amount here, bear with me, I'm looking at a phone here. So the total assessment amount is seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents that would be assessed. The total project cost is, the total construction cost right now is estimated about two point four million dollars, which is the contract value of construction. There have not been any overruns or increases from that point, so construction should come at or below the contract amount. So right now you'd be only, sorry, the assessment, like I mentioned, seven seventy-four, seven ninety-two fifty total. The total city contribution to the project is about one million, one hundred and six thousand dollars with the balance going to Scott County. So it is a higher percentage of the costs for the city's cost to the project because so much is being paid for by Scott County. So if you pass this resolution, the next step for us is we would be mailing out the notices to each of the affected property owners, which would have that assessment value in there, and then an assessment hearing is proposed for the October seventeenth council meeting.
Okay.
And assuming that all goes through as expected, property owners would have about a month or so to pay off their assessments early or have it levy to their county taxes towards the end of November.
Down with the project updates, are you?
I was just going one at a time there, so I don't have any more project updates on, sorry, project updates for this one.
I'm just wondering, are we skipping to five A or are you done with the project updates?
Yeah, he's done with the four A.
Yeah, the project update letter I provide is just to kind of give myself an outline of each project and to kind of show you where we added each one, so. Just working progressively from Main Street to the two thousand and twenty-two to the two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, the two thousand and twenty-three, what are we referencing on your narrative? I see it's mentioned as Columbus Avenue, but it doesn't affect Columbus Avenue.
I'm sorry, did I mention two thousand and twenty-three in there? Should be in reference to the two thousand and twenty-two project. Unless I skipped ahead in your agenda.
It wasn't really clear.
I think it's just a typo.
Okay, okay, and that may be the case, yeah, Columbus Avenue being the two thousand and twenty-two project. And that's all the assessment information I'm referencing, the Columbus Avenue improvements.
Did you want to mention anything about the, anything else about the September fourteenth meeting or?
September fourteenth meeting, yes, so we did, well, the September fourteenth meeting was on the two thousand and twenty-three project.
Yep.
Great, yeah, I'm just going through this project update.
Yeah, we're still on five. Yep, five A.
We haven't finished four.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, so we're just, he put it all on one sheet, but he's doing them in order that you're seeing on the agenda. So all the Main Street stuff and then all of the two thousand and twenty-two stuff and then all of the twenty-three.
Yeah, then we'll get to that, but right now we're talking about the resolution under five A.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry.
That's okay. So, because I can't read it, what's an average, what's going to be the average assessment for, for a house?
Right, so there are two different types of assessments, there's the reconstruction area, which is fourth street.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking for.
Yep, yep, I believe this average assessment was fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Correctly, about fifteen thousand, sorry, fifteen thousand, thirty dollars would be a typical property with a sewer, water and a street assessment, a full street assessment.
Of note, if you remember right from our assessment policy that we passed for the first time, residents will be able to pay a portion of their assessment. In the past, they either had to pay the whole thing or get the whole thing assessed to their property. Now residents can make one payment of at least five hundred dollars if they want to prepay a little bit of it down, but maybe don't have the cash to pay the whole thing down, so.
Yep.
I'd only request in the future that this get printed.
Bigger.
Landscape. So. I know that eventually we'll have digital packets and so we'll be able to make them bigger on the computer, but I couldn't read this with my reading glasses on even, so. It was hard.
All right, so does somebody want to offer the motion? Or if there aren't any other questions, anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, somebody want to offer the street and utility improvement plan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass resolution number two-two-zero-nine-one-nine-zero-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Maggie made the motion, seconded by Bruce, any other discussion?
I just had a quick question. The assessments on this one appear substantially more than what I've seen in the past. Is that just due to construction costs or not? There's, I just want to be able to, in case one of the residents asks, that they're not being assessed, that rate formula hasn't changed at all?
The formula necessarily hasn't changed, but construction costs have increased. And I would probably say in previous projects, the city may have kind of took on some more costs. You know, costs for doing a water service was probably more than was being assessed. And so now the assessments you're seeing are closer to the true value, installing a water service, installing a sewer service and constructing the streets, so. They may appear a little higher, but that's because they're kind of getting closer to what the true cost of construction is today, so. And there has been definitely an increase in construction costs this last year.
Right, well.
Significant in a lot of cases.
The concern that I have for those residents is that just by bad luck, they were the last ones to get it done instead of more the first or, you know, five years ago, and it was nine thousand dollars and now it's fifteen, you know, so.
And they all have been talking to, you know, during the whole process that these are what your assessments for a water service would be, this is what your assessment for a street service, the street sewer service, so nothing should blindside them. They've been notified many times throughout the whole project.
Okay.
But yeah, they, the rates have gone up mainly because of piping and everything, material pricing have skyrocketed. But again, we have updated the public and the residents over and over.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Now we need to call for the notice of hearing of the proposed assessment, so. Does somebody want to make a motion to hold that hearing on, what was it, October seventeenth?
Yes.
That I saw. So moved. Okay, Rick made the motion to hold a public hearing on October seventeenth.
I'll second.
And Maggie made the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay. The third thing, while you did give a project update on it, didn't you, or not really? I'm trying to think now.
Sorry, yep, so the next item on there is two thousand and twenty-three project. So that'd be the improvements, sunrise, sunset and that area east, east of here and that general neighborhood. So neighborhood meeting was completed this last week, Wednesday, the fourteenth of September. Overall, it seemed like we had a pretty good showing. Most, I mean, there are definitely a good amount of questions regarding some improvements that we are proposing, some street narrowing, some sidewalk improvements, some more things that you'll see more detail with the feasibility report. But general, it generally seemed to be pretty positive. And Matt was there with me and along with Bruce and fielded a few questions, but seemed like a pretty good, pretty good turnout overall.
Nobody said anything to my last question, Matt, that you can think of, did any residents say in, you know, two houses or two streets over, they did it five years ago and it was?
About the rates?
The rates, yeah.
Yeah, no, we actually, we talked a lot about the rates and what your water service charge is going to be, your sewer service, the street. And actually we're proposing a five percent increase, we're estimating a five percent increase of what this was. And no, we didn't have any questions saying, holy cow, that's crazy. It was, we explained to them why the rates have been going up. And really we had twenty residents, seventeen that are going to be affected from this project and very null, I mean, they asked really good questions about the project, sidewalks is a big question, but they understood why we were putting them in. But no, when it comes to, back to your rate question, no, they all, we explained it really well and I think they all understood. They did actually, they asked a lot of good questions, it was, the three of them I've been to, that was probably, not saying grading them, but that was a very good turnout and a great, great questions that we got at it.
Okay.
Yeah, as Matt noted, we are proposing a five percent increase to assessments from year to year. And part of that is normally be two or three percent, but we've seen ten to fifteen to twenty percent increase in construction costs in some areas and we don't know where that's going to be next spring, so. As those products are bid out, we had the opportunity to reevaluate assessments.
Okay.
See if they should come down or not.
I was just wondering in this sense of fairness if maybe we, the city couldn't contribute a little bit more portion of it.
I mean, I suppose there's always that opportunity, the thing you run into tricky there is someone could say, okay, why did the city, why is, why did I have to pay twenty-five percent of the assessment whereas these people only had to pay twenty percent just due to rising costs?
Right.
And so it really comes back on to, is it, do you spread that out among all the taxpayers? Or do you focus on those more who are getting the most improvement out of the project?
I understand, yeah, thanks.
So it's just general project update, so the October thirteenth council meeting, you'll have the feasibility report will be presented, so you'll have that week before that, so you can kind of see this stuff in more detail on the two thousand and twenty-three project. And the assumption is that if council proceeds, that the public hearing will be at the October seventeenth meeting, so the same meeting as the assessment hearing, most do both of them consecutively. And I guess that's all I have for updates then.
Okay, what, well, what's this HSI?
Oh, the HSI, yep, I do still have that on there, so that's the project that was approved this last council meeting. At this point, we've just done some field review and looking at that point, but SEH hasn't done too much on it yet. The project memo is being worked on by the planning department, so.
Okay.
Once that's complete, we'll start moving a little further with it.
What do the acronyms mean?
HSI, it's the Highway Safety Improvement Program.
Okay.
And that's just the funding program that's being used to.
Oh, that's, I was thinking this was the other street, this is Tenth Avenue, I'm sorry.
Yeah, HSI or the RFB is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, so it's the flashing, flashing signs.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking it was the first street the other way between Lexington and Seventh.
So I just kind of notes, I am providing these memos at different council meetings, the last meeting and this meeting, just a general idea of what SEH is working on. And so that's more my intent is just to kind of show, these are the projects we have going on, so we have four projects that are listed on here. And I want to get where we're at at everything.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the public's invited to speak on any matters that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody on the public that wants to speak on matters that are not on the agenda? Going once, going twice. Okay, let's move on to number nine, ordinances for introduction. So we had, oh, this is a new one, yes.
All right, I can give you a background on our proposed THC licensing ordinance. Myself, Administrator Tetsloff and Chief Garice had met with the city attorney, actually I should mention Planner Chapman as well, on a couple of different occasions to talk about how we would follow up from that August first moratorium for the THC products that basically stopped in time the facilities that were, establishments in town that were selling the THC products that were in compliance with the state statute. And during our discussions with the council at that time, it was indicated that you would be favorable to limiting the licenses to brick and mortar locations within commercially zoned property. So that is what we have developed with the city attorney. The city's tobacco ordinance was really used as the basis for the licensing ordinance because much of it is similar. Yet we do have some additional backgrounding type information contained in this THC ordinance over the tobacco one. And then in addition to that, this, just like tobacco, would be one year time period for the licenses from January one to December thirty-one of each year. And wouldn't necessarily be limited to places that already sell tobacco, just again would be brick and mortar locations in a commercial district. One thing I wanted to call out here is while we're proposing to do the introduction and first reading tonight in talking with the city attorney, because we do mention that this is only going to be allowed at a location in a commercial or industrial zoning district where retail sales are allowed. And I can talk about that a little further, but because it touches on zoning, Scott Riggs is recommending that we route that through the planning commission so that we cover our legal bases. Because anything typically that covers the zoning realm has to go through a public hearing at the planning commission before it's adopted by the council per state law. So even though we're not proposing any changes to the zoning ordinance, we are covering that base just because we mentioned the commercial restriction and where this could happen. And that's to limit home-based businesses, people selling THC products out of their home, that type of thing. So if you want to get into the details, we can, we can do that here tonight. I don't know, Jim, if you had anything you wanted to add from a PD standpoint, but yeah, very, very similar language to what we have in our existing tobacco ordinance.
No, I would just echo what Ken said, I thought the ordinance was put together well by our city attorney and read very well. Very similar to our tobacco, but hit all the issues and concerns that we had about THC. So I think it looks like a very good document at this time.
And does this include THC beverages?
This would include all THC products that meet the current state statute. And obviously that could change, you know, with next year's legislative session. So we could be revisiting this within a year, but.
I didn't see any fees.
Yeah.
We do not have any fees proposed at this point, I think our tobacco fee at this point is two hundred a year. And I think the thing we had talked about internally was there's a little more investigation that goes into this in a typical tobacco, more similar to liquor than that, so I don't know if we would want an investigation fee. We hadn't really talked too much about that yet, but we just need to cover our costs. We don't want to have, you know, anything over and above that, which is any fee that we have in our fee schedule. We just want to cover our, our costs and make it, you know, reasonably attainable, I guess, as it would be for tobacco and liquor as well.
So.
But that's a big range between, what's our liquor, twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven hundred and two hundred, so there's a.
I think it would be much closer to tobacco, just is what we had talked internally.
Yeah.
Investigation fee would probably be the, the one that we really need to talk about further.
So I would imagine you'd be bringing a recommendation?
Yeah, before it comes back for a final reading, we would have that information. I had Planner Chapman check in with some cities that do have the THC ordinances in place. I think Golden Valley was one of the first ones in the state, their fees are significantly higher than ours, not a great example. I think there's upwards of five hundred dollars for their THC license that they put into effect. So we'll, we'll just have to talk about what, what would cover our, our time and background checking or investigation to cover that.
Well, the cheaper it is, then the more licenses you're going to have. So I guess my feeling was is to somewhat control it and not just be a free for all. That, you know, maybe it's a thousand dollars, you know, somewhere in between that two hundred and that twenty-seven hundred.
Which is probably where it'll end up, yeah, I just, we hadn't talked any further about the investigation.
And we just have to make sure, I mean, the state requires that cities aren't making money off of this. And so any fee we charge, we have to be able to justify, if we're charging a thousand dollars a year, what work are we putting into it if someone challenges us that's costing the city a thousand dollars to do that, so.
Well, I know now that I'll have, whatever it comes out, if it's closer to the tobacco one. And by law, we can't make money on it. Why is the liquor license twenty-seven hundred when they usually do one compliance check a year? Or maybe two, I don't know how many you do, Jim, but it's probably one. This would be very similar to that.
Well, I know one thing we talked about is tobacco is probably too low. So we really need to look at raising that, I don't know, the last time we had raised the tobacco.
It's been the same for years and years.
Yeah, considering we do compliance checks with that too, so.
I guess my argument is that the fee could be much higher than that, not necessarily that we're going to make any money with it, but my perception is we're not covering the overhead of council time, staff time and just the regular annual work that goes into reviewing, reviewing it.
And, and you also have taken into account that occasionally when somebody isn't complying, suddenly your work is going to be way above the standard, and so you're trying to balance those out so that your occasional non-above-the-standard is also getting covered a little bit.
And I know when we talked with the city attorney, I, I just brought up that with THC, I envision there is going to be much more investigation with it, could even be some testing costs at one point, that if, if we believe there's a violation and we are going to pursue criminal charges for it, even if it's a misdemeanor on a state statute, to prove our case, we would have to get that tested. And maybe that's because they were selling and it wasn't properly labeled by a manufacturer. I mean, if they ended up making it the night before in their kitchen and it's not labeled, well, we have to prove what's in it then if we're going to charge them with a violation. So there could be some costs there, and not that everybody's going to violate it, but that, that was just something I brought up, that this is a little more involved than simple tobacco because generally you can look at a tobacco product and say, yeah, this is packaged as tobacco, it is tobacco. So that's just something that we talked about and, and that we wanted to talk more at department head level anyways before we came forward with a cost that we would propose.
The actual testing of the product itself, do we know as the state's probably going to be doing, doing compliance testing, I'm assuming for that? So we don't have to get involved in that part of it, where we're verifying if it's point three or point two or if someone did a point five and?
Right now, the statute talks are put it in the Board of Pharmacy.
Right.
And they do not have anybody, any agents to do enforcement. So I don't know that they will be testing at all.
So then it would fall upon the cities to do that testing if we would choose to do that.
Yeah.
And that would be a major expense.
Yep.
If we would choose to do it, but.
Would that be something that a drug task force would, could provide?
I think there'd have to be a certified lab for it to be in court to be.
It would, I don't necessarily think the drug task force is focusing on that.
Okay.
They're looking at felony violations of manufacture and distribute, distributing of those chemicals that raise that level. THC probably isn't part of that right now, especially with the, with the movement of decriminalizing marijuana. It'd be difficult for them to look into it. Oftentimes they, an investigation might, might start with some marijuana, but it usually leads to other illegal drugs with that then.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Appreciate you guys getting it to us promptly, so it's timely and we can get the moratorium lifted in a timely manner.
Unfortunately, we have to run it through Planning Commission, which will not have until the end of October. But that will be in front of you, should be the first meeting in November that we have that back in front of you for a second reading.
Okay.
It's still more guidance than what the state gives.
Yeah, they, you know, they pushed it so fast, they forgot about taxes, I can't believe that. But I just, I'm saying, you know, I just.
That would have raised awareness.
Yeah, that definitely would have. So does somebody want to offer the first reading?
I will.
Okay.
So moved.
So Sean made the motion to offer the first reading, ordinance number three thirty-one is, and Rick made the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Just real quickly, so it won't be on the September twenty-eighth planning meeting, is that?
It will not, because we were not able to get the minimum ten-day notice.
Oh, that, that.
Prior to the planning meeting, correct.
I did see that in there, okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the second reading of ordinance number three twenty-eight.
Yeah, so I don't have anything new to note on this one, just the companion zoning ordinance amendment to allow two planning commissioners, or council members on the planning commission when we are short applicants.
Okay, does somebody want to offer that ordinance? So Rick made the motion for the second reading of ordinance number three twenty-eight, is there a second? I'll second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the next item is the second reading of ordinance number three twenty-nine. Talking about waterworks and amending the section about sewers.
Yes, we had no changes to the language from the first reading at the September sixth council meeting. So if you have any questions for myself or Bruce, we could take those from you tonight.
Any questions, otherwise I'd take a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance three twenty-nine.
So moved.
Maggie made the motion, Sean seconded it, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're up to C, the second reading of ordinance number three thirty, granting CenterPoint Energy a franchise.
Yes, as you may recall, at the previous meeting, council voted unanimously by the present to approve the first reading. So nothing has changed since that point. Of note, assuming council votes to approve the second reading tonight, it'll be sent to CenterPoint and they have sixty days, I guess, then to respond to the grant of franchise, so.
Okay. Any questions on that, otherwise I'd take a motion to approve ordinance number three thirty.
Any questions on that? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve ordinance number three thirty.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, the second reading of the ordinance, right, three thirty?
Correct, correct, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, and I'll make a second on that. And any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, now we're up to resolution number, or the resolution about adopting the preliminary tax levy.
Uh, yes, so just quick background. As you may remember, we had our first meeting on August twenty-ninth, which point staff brought forward a levy increase of about seventy-two thousand dollars or one point five-six percent. We had some discussion during that meeting that police vehicles should be paid by the levy, not ARPA funds due to their almost annual occurrence. So that increased our levy to just over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand over twenty-twenty-two, or about two point seven-eight percent. At the second meeting on September twelfth, we shared, we shared a draft and also had a discussion. Staff shared with council a perceived need for potentially additional officers. And then after some discussion, the council asked staff to bring back a preliminary not-to-exceed levy of four million eight hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and seven dollars, or an increase of two hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which is five percent over the previous, over twenty-twenty-two. As a reminder, this is not a final approval of the levy, but a preliminary that we are not able to exceed then after September thirtieth. My hope is that we can refine that and obviously get it below five percent. But that five percent is more there as a precautionary in case we run into something that was unforeseen in the next couple of months.
Any questions for Josh? So now.
And I, I should note, Robin did pass out a new resolution. There is one sentence added on to that first paragraph that reads, "The levy amount includes all necessary debt service payments and any other bond payments have sufficient funds to cover debt requirements." This is just because Scott County requires a statement that all debt service is either being levied for or has sufficient funds to be able to pay that, pay off your debt service for the year.
Okay. I'll offer resolution number twenty-two dash zero nine dash one, or nineteen dash zero two, adopting the preliminary tax levy.
Second.
Should that say preliminary? In here, it just says property tax levy for taxes payable in twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, probably should.
Yeah. Okay. And Rick made a second. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
We will get that added in for your signature copy.
Okay. The next item is the review and approval of the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan for Grant.
To give you a little background on that again, I think we've talked a couple of times about the DNR grant we received for Emerald Ash Borer mitigation. That grant included seventy-five new trees, planting supplies for those trees, water tank, auger for planting trees, constructing a gravel bed, completing a public tree inventory, and finally, but actually is the first item we're going to be completing here tonight, hopefully, is the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. So we had worked with the Department of Ag to put together the plan. Largely, there's a template that you put together. And really, the point of the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan is to provide information that'll help mitigate Emerald Ash Borer in the community. And that will range from educating. So we'll put information in our newsletter. We've already got some information on our website about the infestation and general information to tie back to the Department of Ag. Had we not already had our tree ordinance updated from about ten years ago to include Emerald Ash Borer infestation as a nuisance, we would have followed through as an action item to take care of that, but we already had that in our tree ordinance. And then a couple of other bits of information in the plan that are, are really new and not necessarily, you know, that we're putting it in code or anything, but it provides information for people that would wish to treat Emerald, or Ash trees that they want to save from Emerald Ash Borer. So we have actually a list from the Department of Ag that we'll provide on our website that people can follow up if they want to treat a tree that is acceptable in order to save it. It ultimately would have to be treated for the remainder of its life. It's nothing that you can treat and then just forget about. But some people would wish to do that for, you know, nice value trees on their property. It talks about that if we have a bunch of trees that we need to cut down, that we would attempt to reuse the mulch around city parks, because we can keep it within the community. There's no further threat to our existing trees. So that is an option for mulching and using the materials for city use. And then finally, monitoring the spread of ash trees, and that ties back to the public tree inventory that we will actually be putting out for proposals probably this winter yet. And we'll have an inventory of all public property, ash trees, and other trees. But ash trees obviously are the important one that we want to track for where we're finding that they're being identified with Emerald Ash Borer infestation. And then when they get removed, we can take them off the inventory. This includes city park property, other city property, including where we have facilities, and then actually public right-of-way as well. And then one final thing that the Department of Ag recommended that we add in is advertising tree sales. We don't have tree sales that the city does, but one they noted that the county, Scott County specifically, the SWCD offers an annual tree sale. And I think what we'll end up doing is working with them on a more appropriate city-type tree bundle. Because there's twenty-five tree bundles, probably not appropriate for a third anchor city lot. So we'll, we'll be talking with them to see if there's some type of smaller plan we can get put together for people that want to replace ash trees and/or get ahead of the curve if they have one that hasn't become infected yet. So really, it's just a, an outline that we can follow and people can read about that. We are taking efforts to lessen the mitigation. We know we can't stop it. We cannot prevent it from spreading, but lessen that impact to our budget. And it actually helps for future grant applications as well. So we're just in the beginning stages, obviously, with our, our grant money. But this plan was actually part of the in-kind match that we provided for the grant. So myself and Planner Chapman, and then review by Matt Rinda and Jim Caligari in Parks put this together. So I want to thank all of them for their help in putting that together as well.
Okay. Got a few questions if I could?
Mm-hmm.
I like the plan. I think it's great. On the first page, I'll just go through, I have four or five questions. Constructing a gravel bed, I'm just surprised by that. We don't have a gravel bed like the ANPI property we could use for that.
So this is actually a kind of a raised bed that we will take our bare root trees that we buy through the grant, and it just makes it easier to put them in there till they're ready to plant for our sites. We're going to try to do twenty-five trees a year for each of the, well, actually, we'll probably do over the next two years.
Putting them in the ground, you mean?
What's that?
Are you putting them in the ground, you mean?
Yeah, they'll eventually go in their formal locations. This is like a temporary holding place for them.
Made of gravel?
The gravel bed, yep.
Oh, okay. I assumed you were looking for a staging area where you had them, okay.
Not at all. Actually, that'll be very likely up by our tree farm, which is that siding hillside part.
Okay.
No, the gravel allows for you to still grow them and maintain them, but then allows for easy removal without having to dig them up and pick all the dirt out.
Age four, we talk about number two, remaining removal of infested trees. The nuisance ordinance requires the removal of publics. So we're kind of enforcing it through our nuisance ordinance.
Correct.
I think to be proactive about communicating this, because I don't think people understand that, that the city would be able to require them through ordinances to take down a tree.
Right.
And bear the cost of doing it. I think that's a very big issue and we, I would appreciate us communicating that right from the get-go, if we're going to be doing that kind of thing.
Yep, and we've had that in our code for, I think, about ten years. I think it was two thousand and eleven that, that actually got put into place when Scott County had a efforts countywide to get everybody on board with that. And we just haven't had it, obviously, until December of twenty-twenty-one, when we discovered it. So, yeah, we'll want to communicate that quite often, probably maybe a monthly type thing in our newsletter that people can, if we see it, we're going to call that out and.
And it really, I think it'd be very helpful for staff to be really ahead of that.
Yep.
Get out there ahead of time. So the staff isn't bearing the burden or the, the anger or emotion, let's say, of that. Because it could be, we're talking about a significant, possible significant expense.
Correct.
If you have two or three ash trees like I do on my home property. On the next page, the first sentence, "The city will permit, permit residents to use chemical treatments." How would we control this part of it? Or is a lot of this planned basically like a voluntary participation by the residents?
It's completely voluntary if they want to treat their trees. I don't know if permit is maybe not the right word for that.
I'm wondering if, if, if a resident decided to do it like I have done it already.
Mm-hmm.
We, we don't have this plan enforced or out there. How would the city be involved in my personal decision to treat it and who I use and what I use to do it with?
Yeah, this is more going to be communicated with the tree companies, so that we'll have to basically communicate with them that when you've treated a tree, we'd like to know that so we can put it on our inventory and tie that back to that tree has been treated by this company in this state.
Are we going to regulate which companies are allowed to do that service?
No, they just have to be on the Tree Care Registry and have a valid pesticide application license from the state. So there's nothing we will issue on our end as far as a local license. So they just have to be compliant with the Department of Ag requirements.
And then the letter C, records of all treatment, you're, there again, you're talking about just that the, the provider, the service provider wouldn't let the city know? Are you expecting the residents to let us know?
No, the tree providers is who we're going to be in contact with, yep.
Okay. And then the bottom, it talks about the budget. Five thousand has, is budgeted. Is there a spelling error possibly there?
Has.
Extra word in there.
Is budgeted. We'll have that. We'll get rid of the word has. Yep.
And then along with that, do we have like a penciled-in budget for this plan, how we're spending the money?
For the grant?
Right.
Yes, that was part of the grant agreement. We approved July sometime.
Okay, it was broken out into these categories?
Yep.
How much is spent on trees and whatnot?
Yep. And again, there was no required match other than we had the in-kind for staff to put together the plan that you have in front of you here tonight. So a hundred percent paid for through the grant.
Okay, and then last year, are these funds running through the park budget or the general fund budget or?
Oh, we, we need to get reimbursed. We'll probably expend them through the park department and then just reimburse back. We can do one reimbursement every year, basically in December. And we have until the end of twenty twenty-four to complete all the work. Actually, they extended that into twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, I guess I would leave it to staff to think about if that's the best spot for it or not, because I would imagine most of the activity will not be involved in the park land. I would imagine going forward, it'd be more involved in residential compliance and.
Well, actually, through, through the grant, actually, most of it will be park, because they're, they're going to put together the gravel bed for the tree planting. They're going to purchase the trees. They're going to contract with the larger trees to be removed by the library that are public nuisance concern for us right now that have Emerald Ash Borer. And then the, actually, the tree inventory as well, probably come right through there. So pretty much everything related to the grant is running directly related to park property.
That makes sense.
It will morph into probably more other public facilities at some point, but.
Yeah, I would imagine there'd be more ash trees in the public or the residential domain than the.
Yeah, and we'll probably be amending the plan at that point. And they have more guidance for us at that point.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan for Grant.
So moved.
Maggie made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item is the paperless city council agendas.
Yes, this is a policy that we talked about at the last meeting. Basically, the policy stating that starting December, and the December fifth packets, that everything will be starting to be distributed digitally. One of the, one of the questions that came up at the last meeting regarded having to save any notes on there. I did speak with Scott Riggs and he did state that it was a belief under current state statute that anything would need to be saved. So thinking about how that would work, knowing that you should all have access now to a a share, a council share folder, I asked CTS to build, put a folder inside of that for each of you that would only have access to you personally and myself. So basically, if you make any notes on your council packet, you can just save it in there. And then if for some reason anyone ever requests those notes, I would have access to be able to go grab those. But it would be basically five individual folders that each of, only yourselves would have access to in there. So I guess, are there any other questions about this policy or concerns?
Yeah, I'm kind of, yeah, I really like having my paperwork in front of me, so that's going to be tough for me, so I don't know.
Well, I think there'll be a transition for all. Give it a try, I guess.
Yeah, what happens if that don't work out?
It is a city council policy, so obviously any city council policy can be adapted and amended in the future.
A Rick clause.
Might be a few more.
Bangin' my clothes.
So, okay. So what do we need to do on that? Just, that was an update?
That, that was just an update, so I guess I would be looking for.
Motion to approve that policy?
Approve or otherwise.
Okay.
Do we actually have a written policy?
Yeah, it was in the.
I thought I had included that in here. It was, it was in the last packet.
It was in the last packet.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the paperless council packet policy.
I'll, I'll second that. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, then miscellaneous is the minutes from the park and the EDA. Bring anything up there. And then we would go into closed meeting, so.
Was there any other miscellaneous that you want to go around?
Yeah, I probably should go around the room for that. Matt?
Just an update, or not an update, but those inky days went really good for the Public Works. I just want to thank, you know, all staff. It was all hands on deck. It was parks, streets, wastewater helped us Saturday, Sunday. I think it turned out really good talking with Jim and Brooke at the chamber. It seemed like the event went really smooth and for the most part, very safe. So again, special thanks to them. Some of you guys probably saw on the weekly update that Josh sent out the painting of the plows. Something I've wanted to do for a long time. I saw it in an article in one of my magazines about five years ago. Started kind of working with the school at one time and then COVID happened, kind of put that on pause. But talked to Josh earlier this summer about it. I was pretty passionate about it. I think it's really cool for the kids to do it. Talked to St. Once, they were all on board. They asked for half of our plows. We were trying to give the other half to the public school, but they just had too much stuff going on this year, so we'll revisit that next year. But they started last week painting and like smile on those kids' face and crawling underneath these big plows. They just thought it was the coolest thing in the world. So hopefully, we'll have all the plows painted and all their fancy art designs done in here in the next couple of weeks. And talked to Patrick and he's going to maybe do a little story on it. And then their last day, I'm going to do like a ten, fifteen-minute speech if I can keep sixth, seventh, and eighth graders' attention and just kind of plow safety and the importance of what the Public Works does. So it was really cool to see the St. Once kids just super excited to do it. So just in case you guys were wondering, what is Matt doing over there? That's all I got.
Thanks. Chief?
I would just echo what Matt said. We had a, a great weekend. Numbers were just slightly down by like fourteen calls. But citations and arrests were down. We had a great crowd, both Friday night and Saturday night, or Saturday. So, yeah, great weekend, good celebration. I think everybody enjoyed themselves. With the exception of those that might have met the concrete when they fell over.
Bruce?
Just a quick update. I've been doing quite a bit with our wholesale power supplier in regards to.
Just a quick update. I've been doing quite a bit with our wholesale power supplier in regards to the volatility of energy rates as of late. And um Sempa had hoped that throughout the summer here, that natural gas prices would level off, and it's actually went the other way. And the gas prices are trading at nearly three times of what was, what is normal. Typically, we see rate increases, you know, around the first of the year when the council approves a new rate schedule. Not to get ahead of the uh Utilities Commission, but I will be presenting to them that we're going to have to make some rate changes prior to that um this fall. So more to come on that, and then obviously I'll bring it to the council for fee or rate or our schedule change. But um just due to those volatilities, we're not able to sustain through rate stabilis, sta, stabilization rates right now. We're going to have to start raising rates in order to compensate for that. So more to come on that. But just a heads up, I, I did allude to it in uh, in the newsletter last month in regards to changes that are going to, pending. And um it's, it's going to come through, so that's, we'll deal with that as it comes along here. But kind of like the, what we've been dealing with, with, you know, at the gas pump or whatever, it's finding electricity rates typically lag that by a little ways. But not able to hold it off any longer, so.
Anything else? Nope. Robin?
Good evening. Um, recently, Kim Lee in purchasing and I have been reviewing our credit card options for rebate programs. So US Bank, our current credit card was through, was able to offer us a quarterly rebate program. So we'd see one point three five percent back on purchases um quarterly. So there's no additional tasks on our part, um, no additional fees, and um not much that changes with our, with our card structure. People got to maintain their existing cards, just adding the option that we can see a little bit of cash back with our purchases. So.
I have nothing additional.
Okay.
I, like Ken, have nothing.
Okay.
I just have two follow-up questions um about that trailer on Pershing. Were you able to find out anything? There's a, like a hu, huge trailer parked on the street in Pershing. That I think they use for recreational vehicles and it's been parked there for weeks.
Yeah, he moved it this weekend during Dozinki and put it right back out on Sunday evening. Yeah, I almost got into an accident there because I didn't see.
Yeah, you can't see around it, yeah.
So I bel, I believe, Jim, isn't it correct that they can have a trailer on the street for a certain amount of time?
Supposed to be moved every forty-eight hours, you know, well, this one.
This isn't, yeah. And it's, it, it's so big, you can't see the, the intersection. So you can't see a car coming. Um, so.
Just north of Second Street, Matt said it?
Yes.
Okay. I'll have them check it out.
Yeah. Um, I, I, I understand a smaller trailer, but this one is really over the top. It's, it's a beautiful trailer, but um, and sorry to, to maybe put you on the spot, but I was just curious of where we are about potentially purchasing new chairs for the police department.
Uh, I was going to be taking a look at our budget, where we're at for the end of the year and try and make it work.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah. Um, there's, there are a couple that um, as you well know, are in pretty sad shape. They've had a broken back, so I was just a little concerned. Okay, thanks, Jim. I'd appreciate it.
Sean? Yeah, I just had a, I don't even know if it's really questions, but more of a, something to get on the radar. And, and they were asking for a little feedback with the uh, uh, and wanted me to make a comment about one of the items as well, and it's the, has to do with the new Preg Orioles. And um obviously now they're, as three-two is going away and they're able to sell strong beer, they just wanted to know what the options were that, that we might have to discuss as far as them not having to pay um, because they're not all year round, to maybe come up with another tier that would cover like five months of a liquor license for strong beer, as opposed to paying the, the full amount for a year when they are only open five months.
Could they get a temporary, just like we do? So, because it would just be like home games, right?
Right, and it's just home games, so. And I don't know, maybe that's the way you do it. You do it per game? Or you give them twenty days or whatever their, their season is, or I don't.
Yeah, I think their season would be a little longer than that. Um, I know with the temporary, there's some distinctions. It can't be longer than four days at a time, and then it's supposed to have thirty days between your next temporary.
Okay.
Uh, the idea is, hey, if you need a liquor license, you get a liquor license, um, and not just use up temporaries. But uh, we can look at it and, I mean, I don't necessarily believe it's my issue. It would be admins.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we can look at, because it's a, like you said, it's a situation that's different than someone who's operating year-round every night. We can take a look at it.
Okay.
Do they have an end date for three-two?
Well, from my understanding, they, they have the right, they, they don't have to, they're looking for a strong liquor license.
Yes.
Because more and more m, major manufacturers aren't making three-two, because Minnesota is the only state left, so. But I thought that did change the last, at the last legislative session.
I think they have the ability to apply for one, absolutely.
Right, okay. So um, that's just kind of the direction they're going. I mean, obviously, the season's done now, but we have, it'll be right around the corner. So I just wanted to see if there was, I knew there were some legal things with the temporary license, that it was like four-day runs and whatnot, but. And then the other thing that they inquired about was there was no beer at the softball field this year during the tournament. Mainly because they, there's some liability issues that I think the Chamber didn't want to take on, or the, the, the hosting committee could also be held responsible, didn't want it. But they were inquiring, the Orioles were that maybe they would use that as a fundraiser and that they would assume the liability uh next year. And they just wanted to see, I know that isn't really our, it really wouldn't be our choice. They'd have to work with the Chamber, I'm guessing, on that. But they just want to put us on notice that they might want to use that weekend as a fundraiser and then, you know, sell beer and want to know if there was any pushback from, maybe any thoughts that you had, Jim, in regards to, you know, maybe they could only sell two at a time and, as opposed to the trays that they used to sell or things like that. They'd be willing to work with you on that.
Yeah, I think if there's a little more oversight, that, yeah, um, some of the feedback that some of the officers were hearing from um classmen that were playing in the tournament, said uh they would rather not have to bring their own alcohol. They would like it provided at the field.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, that would be an option, um, even to the degree that if, if they segmented their liquor license, they could include that time period or possibly apply for a temporary, because they are a nonprofit. They could probably get it for that weekend also.
Okay, all right. I'll pass that information on. Thank you.
I'm surprised you don't have like a seasonal permit that you can get like that.
Well, I think that's what I, we'd want to discuss that if we have that ability.
Only thing I got to bring up is I just attended Malestrana's fiftieth anniversary. And they had a nice turnout and a lot of residents there, a lot of former employees, current employees. And I did a little resolution recognizing the fifty years of Malestrana being in the community. So that's all I have.
Nothing.
I just want to thank the staff for Dozinki. We did work out real good.
And I did too, earlier, I think, Matt, so.
That's all I got.
Okay, so with that, we're going to go into a closed meeting. Um, so thanks, everybody, for coming.
Does that mean I got to leave?
No.
Going to make that Vikings game yet?